Workshop meeting of the City Commission is called to be held at the regular meeting place of the City Commission at City Hall 201, North Second Street in the city of Palatka. It begins at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, February 5th, 2019. The purpose of the meet, of the workshop meeting, is to receive input and discuss alternatives for Memorial Day weekend events. Please govern yourselves accordingly. We're now standing for the pledge and invocation. Mr. Buckles, would you lead us to the pledge and invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the civil republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and opportunity together as a community and discuss things that improve our community more. And we ask that my guide this meeting, and we say these things, humbly in the name of our Son, Jesus Christ, Amen.
So, one of the reasons that we're here is, truly the only reason we're here is to talk about Blue Crab, both past and present, and where we are in dealing with what many people would call the most popular weekend of the year for the city of Palatka and Putnam County as a whole. And so, we called this workshop meeting because more than anything else, we wanted to hear from our stakeholders and our citizens as to where we are and how we move forward. And but before, as we get started with that, I see in the back of the room, I've got Mr. George Deloach, who's here. I've spoken to him. I was anticipating John Hodge also being here, and maybe Ms. Marshall Lane. Mr. Deloach, if you could come forward, if you don't mind, and give us the history of Blue Crab, and you've been, kind of, talk to us about your positions with Blue Crab, and how this thing evolved into what it was a couple of years ago, a few years back.
Thank you very much. We, at the time I was involved with Blue Crab Festival, I was the manager of Badcock Furniture, later became the owner of Badcock Furniture, so I had a vested interest in what was happening downtown in Palatka. I was also, for several years, the president of Downtown Merchants Association. The last major upgrade that happened during that, or started during that time was when I was president, and we were able to get nearly $7 million in grants to make those things happen with new city lights and things that happened in that time period. And then after that, Ann Crabtree succeeded me as president of Downtown Merchants Association. But I was involved, starting from year two of Blue Crab Festival. I was chairing it over for four years. In its heyday, people from University of Florida made the counts of who and what we had there, and our counts for the four-day weekend that they gave us from University of Florida was 220,000 people, anywhere from 190,000 to 220,000 people. That was probably too big. But, because we didn't have a parking for it, it was crowded, but brought a lot of people to Palatka, a lot of people to this community, and it was extremely successful. And it was successful and had money. Money was given back to the city of Palatka. And then, Blue Crab Festival Committee, I understand, decided, you know, they paid a whole lot for an insurance policy, they could only get them lasting for a year, and they decided to bring a country star to Palatka to make some of their money back, and while they were using that, that was a total failure, and they lost a whole lot of money. And the degradation of Blue Crab Festival started from that point and went down. Last time I attended, I was down there and had talked to several people. Pretty much one kind of music was the only kind of music was there. There was not much of anything there. I mean, it was honestly a disgrace to be called the Blue Crab Festival. Talking to several different people, they said it was pretty much just that kind of music. And for the Blue Crab Festival, or any festival, we're successful. We had lots of different types of music were played throughout the weekend, and it's like going to the library. If you go to the library, they've all got one kind of book, you're not going to attract many people to a library. You're not attracting very many people to a festival where there's only one kind of music, and it should be attractive to a lot of other people. There's a lot of young people here that can help make Blue Crab happen. I'll be more than happy to give them what advice I have. I'll be happy to volunteer to do other things, but I took 10 days off, Blue Crab, before we grew up weekend. And it took every bit of that to pull everything together with the vendors that we had and so forth. And we had vendors that came back every single year, and they wanted to, they were willing to pay for their spot a year in advance to make sure they had their spot when they came back the following year. That can happen again very easily, but it's just going to take some work. I don't know where it got to the point where the books were not open for Blue Crab. If I'm an investor, if I owned a business, if I still own the Badcock business, I invested in it, I would want to know where my money's going. So whenever they closed the books to it, and how that came about, I have no idea. But it was not healthy for Blue Crab, and you've got a lot of people that were not interested in investing in it and weren't happening where the money goes to. So every bit of that needs to change as far as that goes. It should be open for everybody, and it should be a bit that we have back again. Like I said, I'm more than willing to put my two cents worth in as far as that goes. Younger people need to make it happen, because it will wear you out totally. But I'm willing to do whatever it takes to help make that happen for it to come back again. At this point, you're not going to have a Blue Crab Festival in three months' time. That's just not going to work. But I think you can put something together for a full day, maybe Saturday, and your vendors deal maybe on, I mean, on Monday, and observe Memorial Day, and maybe do some other things in, but you're not going to have a full-blown Blue Crab Festival, and people need to know that you don't have time for a full-blown, you know, because they're going to go down there expecting Blue Crab Festival, what they saw before, and that's not, that's not possible. It's just not possible to make that happen like it was, but there are a lot of things that can happen between now and there, because there are a lot of good people in this county and in this city that like to see it come back. We could have a very good event for a day or two, and then we could gradually move back up to, and you've got enough time to make it happen in a year's time, and pull that together. But some kind of event, I think, needs to happen. We've got a town that we should be proud of, we've got a waterfront, riverfront we should be proud of, and that was what Blue Crab Festival brought to Palatka, for us, bring people downtown, and bring them to the waterfront, and sell what we have. And that's the beauty of this city, and the beauty of what we have on riverfront is what we have as well.
Questions?
But for the people, was part of that Blue Crab, there are most of the people from, the vendors were mostly from out of town, for the most part, weren't they, or the Blue Crab vendors?
The vendors, yes, primarily they were. Yes, they were from out of town. They paid a fee, and as the Blue Crab Festival got bigger and bigger, the fee got larger. I think you can bring some vendors back, most really good vendors probably already booked for that weekend, but you can probably bring some vendors at a smaller fee to get them here, make them aware of it, then the word spreads about it. I went to, I now go to Onion Festival every year, now I go up there. It was a huge ordeal. I went to there, they had a great big, they had a lot of vendors there, a lot of arts and crafts, just a huge deal. It was on the, pretty much like what Blue Crab was in its heyday, and they still have that. But I went around and handed flowers to every one of them personally. I was there for the rodeo anyway, I had flowers to all of them. A lot of them came down here, and we had a waiting list for vendors before it was over with, and we had a waiting list of people that wanted to serve through. And so there was a lot of good things that were there.
What was the relationship with the city during that time?
City furnished, city furnished security with the police department. They furnished dumpsters down in the parking lot over by what used to be Waddles. Dumpsters were there, and they helped, they dumped the trash, put that in there, carried it off, and we had a police presence that was there, and pretty much that's what the city did. And at the end of it, like I said, we made quite a bit of money. City came to Blue Crab and said, you know, amphitheater looks bad, needs a lot of work done to it. They got an estimate for it, and it was like $12,000 to upgrade the amphitheater, to fix the things that were wrong with it. Blue Crab, we gave them $10,000 towards fixing the amphitheater, plus, and our Blue Crab, and our entertainment tent, we had a person that almost died in the entertainment tent, passed out there and had a heart attack, and didn't have the ability to do the things they needed. And so, Blue Crab went out and bought a golf cart, emergency cart, that you actually had a gurney on that you could put people in. So besides the $10,000 we donated for amphitheater, we bought that cart, which I think was about $13,000, something like that. So, but all our books were open, everybody knew exactly what we spent, everything we made, and to get people to invest in that, I think you need that.
George, do you have any recollection at all about what you thought your net profit, I guess for lack of a better term, would be? What you, what your revenue minus your expenses were on average year to the time you had it?
I can't remember. I mean, it was, it took a lot to make it happen, but you had enough vendors, you had enough food vendors, you had enough arts and crafts vendors to pay for a lot of it. By far, the biggest moneymaker was the entertainment tent, because beer was served there, and we had good entertainment, but it was a huge variety of entertainment. You know, all kind of entertainment, Sunday night, Sunday afternoon, Sunday nights was always blues night. Saturday, different entertainment happened all day long. And Monday, we focused pretty much on Memorial Day, what happened there, and then we had a few things, and we shut it down at 5:00 on Monday. But it was, the entertainment tent by far was the biggest draw as far as that went, plus the vendors, but we had vendors that went all the way down St. John's Avenue at one time.
Okay, and feel free in the audience, if you have a question, just stand up, so, and I recognize, just so that you can ask your question. I want this to be a collaborative effort, and I want it to be open, so that we can have real dialogue, not just dominated by us up here in any way. Mr. Russo?
George, the control of the Blue Crab seemingly shifted from business, local business owners' control to this 501(c)(3) and closing their books.
It was, Blue Crab was totally open with everybody, everything we did at the time I left it. I don't know when the degradation of it happened as far as that went. Like I said, I was told that they had plenty, and we put enough money in the bank to make sure that Blue Crab, if we had a bad year, if it poured down rain, we had insurance, but you still needed startup money. So we had enough money that we kept over from year to year. I can't remember what the best figures were, but it was like $20,000, I believe, that we kept. It's been there that we were able to make sure if we had a bad year, the following year, we could cover it and make that happen again, make the start again.
But when did it control of Blue Crab? I mean, right now, the 501(c)(3) owns the name Blue Crab.
But it has for a long time.
They actually own Blue Crab Festival Inc.
It has for a long, long time.
I have no idea where that happened.
There were tri-chairs appointed at first, three chairmen, one. There was a nonprofit that was formed to, as a corporation, and simply the principles of change, president changes, you know, the vice president, the treasurer, the secretary.
I will tell you that-
So it was a natural progression then, as it formed?
When I was involved with, we had a chairman and a vice chairman, and you had co-chair chairs that were in there. And as the, started, I got involved the second year, became the vice chair, and then I was the chairman of it. And I was the single chairman. At that time, I told them, after doing it the last year, that I was the chair. I said, "This has got to be divided up, this is way too big, way more than I can handle." I was doing more Blue Crab business for three months than I was taking care of my own business. And so, it was divided, I was the last single chairman that they had, and after that, three, they had three chairs of it, which was, and I thought they had an actual job for the first couple of three years, and I don't know, but after that, I just kind of totally got away from it, and just went out of business.
Do you remember what those chairs were responsible for, in each segment?
You had entertainment, you had vendors, you had food, I believe is what, is the way they divided it up. If I'm not mistaken. Skeet Alford was one of the chairs that took over after I left there. I can't remember who the other, who the other was.
Marshall Fulgham, CJ.
Right, yes, exactly. So, but, and that's how it happened. Like I said, there was plenty of money there, Blue Crab made plenty of money, but they thought they were doing the right thing by doing something different, and they tried to bring entertainers in over at, to the fairgrounds to make more money and, you know, give it more money, but it lost money by a long shot. And pretty much what they had bankrupt was just gone after that, is what I understand.
Any other questions? Mr. Deloach? In the back, Mr. Lyons. You also worked on the festival for a few years, right?
I never worked on the festival, my parents did, which George probably does a lot of that.
Okay. Ms. Lane?
I think that George is right about most things. The way it worked when it went to tri-chairs was that each tri-chair had several chairs under them, because you have to realize, it took something like 20 chairs. It was a truly a well-oiled machine, but as time went along, expenses got greater, and the city began to charge us for things as well. That, you know, 2008 came up, that hurt everybody in economy. We were having to pay for, after 2001, insurance became a big issue, and we actually got a pretty good deal, because one of our members was in the insurance business. It is a very complicated, to put it on as George says, you don't have time to get four days. You maybe have time for one or two. You will not get the top vendors, because top vendors, Blue Crab was the last big festival they did down in Florida, then they head to Michigan and all that area. It's just the way it works. This year, you can start, George has actually called around and talked to some local people who are entertainers, who are very good and do it professionally. You know, you could put on a pretty good festival, but you have to sit down and realize, and things that some people don't understand, as time went along, I think it took like 45,000 to 60,000 a year was kept that in order to pay for the festival, to that startup cost. Part of that came, of course, because our vendors, from one year to the next, Elaine Wright outdid it, and from one year to the next, those vendors would pay us, the day they came in for that year's festival, they'd be paying us for next year's festival. To get something, if you have a Blue Crab Festival, you have to have crabs. This is early in the season, as most of you know, so the only people who provide us enough crabs was the, there's a state crab fisherman's association. And then through the years, that changed, you had other vendors come in to do it. I think it's possible, like I said, to do a smaller version this year. It can be done, but people have to step up, and that was always the deal. This was, I don't know if y'all read Marshall Fulgham's article in the Daily News, but it was volunteers, and it was people willing to put in a lot of hours. When George says 10 days, he just means that just before the festival. It took us a year. We would finish in the end of Memorial Day, and a month later, when we were all speaking to each other again, we would get back together and start back up for the next year. And that's the only way you do this, to make, I mean, you know, I would love to see it come back, it was such a good thing. About eight years ago, yeah, a lot of us stepped back, they asked the city to let us have a year off, because we were burned out, and we had so many other expenses coming in. The city wanted to keep going, and that's when it kind of began to shift, the who ran it and all that. Very intense mistakes made through the years. For us, things like beer and t-shirts were the big moneymakers. When it became, in recent years, they've had mixed drinks, they've brought in professional bartenders, and when George says, we didn't have, we had some local vendors, we would have them like running their, they could run stands and things like that. Pilot Club, for years, ran the beer tent for us, and that was wonderful. They kept, we had a whole security group all around town. We were talking today about the girls, was it baseball, girls' baseball or?
Yeah, Platte High School softball. They got the ice, they made a deal with Dickerson's, they got the ice wholesale from Dickerson's, Dickerson sold it to the vendors, and it made, it made several thousand dollars for the high school softball team. And there were other churches that were involved, and local people like that that made it happen, and you, I think you could pull those together and make that happen this year.
Yeah, Powell picked up trucks in the beginning.
Exactly.
Right, right. If Powell did, and the Boy Scouts, and we helped pay them, and money went to those, that's the idea, you help the community, the community's helping you. But when you aren't willing to step up and do the work, I think you could get people willing, if you didn't care, you wouldn't be here tonight. And I think the city cares if this happens again. I don't really think you need to let another year go by before you do it. You just have to figure how to get people like Skeet Alford, Marshall Fulgham, Ann Jones, those kind of people who did it, and they had committees under each of them, and that's how, you know, we were used to doing it. Pliciti has to start, and since, usually we started in maybe no later than in December, we were sending out stuff, we were letting them know. We, you have an advantage now, because you have much more things you can do on the internet, but you still have to advertise. The Chamber of Commerce was very good to us about giving us money. All that has to be taken into account, and if you get to talk to the people who really dealt with the Hudson Bolts, that'll make the difference.
Question, to the two of you. The, I guess, the frameworks of the model with the 20 committees and all that stuff, do any of you, did any of you keep any of your old meeting records or any of that stuff with the framework?
At that time, we had, we had a main, when I did, we had a mainstream manager who was Debbie Banks, and everything was kept, well, Blue Crab had their own office, and then we had a deal that kept that, but Debbie had a copy of everything that happened as far as that went as well. When you lost your mainstream manager, I don't know where that went to or what happened with that, but she, but she was, she helped make some of those things happen as far as that went. But personally, I don't have anything as far as that goes. We had, I mean, we had vendors with us that just, we had people call us wanting to get in, we just had no room for. They called the food vendors, everybody. Blue Crab Festival had a great rapport with the vendors that we had, and people called, we just, there was no room left on St. John's Avenue or up and down Memorial Drive to put anybody else. We were just, we were packed out, we maxed out what we could do. But I think we could get back there again with the right leadership and so forth, but it's going to take an infusion of money to make that happen to start with again. But, and I think it, I don't think we need to go away from it, I think this year, there's something that could happen, just not on such a grand scale. But I called a couple of people, they were vendors in Putnam County area that go to places, and I said, "What do you think about making that happen?" And one of the vendors is very active, it was, she's retired, and she said, "I'll be happy to take flowers to all the places I go to between now and then, and you can get vendors." And a lot of the, the good vendors already done, but I think at a reduced cost, for just for a short amount of time, you can do that, and I think you can find food vendors, food trucks could probably come in and make it happen this year, and, you know, and then we can build on that.
I would say that most of the chairs probably have some idea to give you help.
Okay, right here in the front. Can you say your name for the record, so we can have them, I'm sorry?
My name's Owen Rosenberg. I just wanted to know, when was the last time you worked out working here?
When was the last time I was involved with it? I think '98 was the last year, I actually had a hands-on with it.
The second thing I wanted to ask was, is the name Blue Crab Festival, like, not even in the picture with this kind of concept? I mean, do you understand what I'm saying, somebody owned that and not you guys?
They owned Blue Crab Festival Inc. The, there's another organization, which is for lack of, Blue Crab Festival Inc., and so, and then they trademarked the logo. So there, as you do your searches, you'll see throughout the country, there are several Blue Crab Festivals in different locations. There's one in Charleston, South Carolina. They've got like the world's greatest Blue Crab Festival, is one of the companies that's out there. So there's several companies that use kind of the same concept. One of the things that we're going to discuss later is, do we want to stick to the Blue Crab Festival name in what we do? And so, we'll continue to move the, move through this and ask some pertinent questions at different stages from there. You got a question in back? Yeah, question?
Kathy Griffin, I spoke to Sam, deputy, who handles the July Festival. Sam said that this year, he would put Festival C for vendors in the packets, the July Festival packets, so that may help with the vendors. And vendors.
Some of the records might still be over in the annex over there, in some of those old files, and at one time, I did have Debbie Banks' number, telephone number.
We can reach her, she's-
Yeah, Debbie keeps in, and I think that she might be good to help give us some ideas and suggestions, and I don't think she minds doing that.
I think CJ.
Who?
CJ.
Robbie Correa, I have asked, I know where all the records are that Charles had, which Charles didn't put all previous mainstream in, because I didn't go through them. He moved them all, we have a storage place on the second level of the Mirror Spade, and that's where they all are. I can go see if there's anything out there this week.
Any other comments from the audience, from the commission?
I did promise that I would advise the commission that the college is going to have its 5K run Saturday morning. If you remember, George, there was a Floyd Four, if you remember that, back that far.
Yes.
There was a Floyd Four that took place back in the day, on Saturday morning, and the college at some point started a run, a 5K, and they plan on doing that this Saturday of Memorial Day weekend. They wanted me to let the commission know that they plan on starting at Ross and Moll Hall House, and I think they're going to the bridge, so I went back. So I promised I would advise the commission for where, however that works into your plan.
Any other questions?
I was going to say, Sam Khan, they put together all that good stuff for the festival that they have, they might have some suggestions on how to pull some-
Different kind of festival.
I know, but, but getting the nuts and bolts started might be a good help, or they may have some contacts they could pass to you.
Anything else, Mr. Deloach? Thank you very much. Moving on, Palatka Young Professionals, who's, so PYP has actually put forward a special events request for this year, and they've kind of taken the lead as it relates to what's in place this year. Can I get you guys to stand up for me? Everybody who's under 45?
I just don't feel like making-
So who's the spokesperson today? Sounds like, sounds like Katie O's going to volunteer. So Katie, come on up, you're over here for a while.
I'm not going to volunteer.
So first, give us the one minute's build of what PYP is and what your plans are thus far.
Okay. Palatka Young Professionals is a nonprofit organization that has four goals within it, to recruit, retain, develop, and give back to our city. So everything that we do has an underlying mission that involves one of those four factors. As far as our ideas for the Blue Crab and potentially what we could do, we've had a couple of roundtable discussions. I think our goal here tonight was to hear what everybody else was thinking, and take all of your ideas and thoughts into consideration, and then see how we might best fit and work with the other organizations in town. I think everyone's heard tonight, at least if we're all going the same thing, this is going to take a lot of bodies, a lot of manpower, multiple organizations to put this together, and at no point has the Palatka Young Professionals said that we would hands-down be willing to take on this entire thing by ourselves. So to make that clear, we're definitely willing and wanting to work with other people if that's what's best for the community.
And one of the things I think that's going to be the resounding theme as we continue on with this is community partnerships and the community effort. And so, when I, you know, last year, when we talked about doing, doing this, and even this year, we all have to understand, and I think Mr. Deloach hit it on the head, this will not be of the magnitude of what Blue Crab is, but what it will be is a placeholder for this event. Also, I've got information that Toriano is doing something the same weekend at Triangle Park. Does anyone have any information as it relates to that? Yes, sir?
His daughter contacted me and said, "My dad's been on Blue Crab Festival at Triangle Park, and he needs your help, and that's not my interest."
So-
Blue Crab Festival, and this is-
I understood that it was a recreation event, it was, had something to do with sports.
Yeah, I thought it was a sporting event. I got sure about that.
I was just going to add that he did mention, he's added vendors and arts and crafts and food element to the sporting tournament that he, or somebody puts on during that four days.
So I'll share with you guys just a little, just a bit of a story before we get into any conversation about that. Last year, I talked to a local merchant here, restaurateur in downtown, the downtown area, and when Blue Crab was canceled, and what I said to him, and so he says, "I'm going to lose my shirt this year, this is one of my big years." And he said, you know, "Blue Crab Festival not being here is going to be terrible for me," and I said, "I said, "You're probably not going to lose as much as you think you are." And he said, "How can you say that?" And I said, "Because the Blue Crab softball tournament is-" And I said, "Because the Blue Crab softball tournament is still here." And so when he ran his numbers, and it may be different for other merchants, but when he ran his numbers, he came by to me a few weeks after Memorial Day, and he said, "When I ran my numbers, I was only two percent below profits on what I had for that weekend compared to what I had last year, but I didn't use as much staff and I didn't order as much stuff." And he says, "I would have never thought that I would be in that place." And I said, "Well, the Blue Crab softball tournament had eighty-five teams in Plaquah that year, last year." And there was another sixteen teams, women's teams, that got sent to Jacksonville. And so the, and I said, "The people that come in, that stay in the hotel, are those people mostly that come from that softball tournament." And, you know, one of the critical pieces to what we do as it relates to tourism and heads and beds, and I'll have Ms. Jones come up in a minute and talk about that portion of it, is that softball tournament, because from Friday to Monday, those folks are here, they're in the restaurants, they're all thinking that. And it used to be over a hundred and thirty teams at one point that would come in for that event, and it was a major event. And it's kind of along the way, I think we've lost the ability to accommodate it in the same way. But it's a major portion, because you're talking fifteen people per team that you're getting in here, and you're getting almost a hundred teams in. Uh, that's fifteen hundred people that are staying in your community throughout that weekend. They're, that are trying to stay in the local hotels, and they gotta eat in the local restaurants. And every time they got a couple hours break, they're gonna go somewhere else. And at the end of the night, they're gonna come to Steamboat and these other places, and they're for entertainment. And, and so that's a critical part, and I think a lot of people miss out on how important those ancillary opportunities are. And I, I just think that if we push vendors to Triangle Park and away from the riverfront, it, it does not have any benefit to our local merchants. And I think that's where the problem comes in. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but Mr. Lyons, you get through these to the festival, you get a lot of folks that, that on the other opposite end that walk into your spot, walk into your business, uh, in order to consume libations or whatever it may be, but you get a lot of walk-in people off the streets during the festival when it comes down St. John's Avenue.
Absolutely.
And the critical portion is, I think it has to, this thing started with merchants, it started to benefit the community as a whole, and it included local folks. And I think we have to continue on in that regard, knowing this year that it, it's not gonna look like Blue Crab Festival, but what it's gonna look like is, you know, a, a gathering on the riverfront that could bring folks. It may look like the fireworks works with some vendors here, where we've got ten to fifteen thousand people who gather in, uh, and we've got music and some other things there. And we'll talk about it and get ideas and shares to where we are, but that's what it is. And PYP, you're right, absolutely. PYP's a young organization, you know, you guys are full of energy, and, and I think there's an opportunity for us to collaborate and to kind of build off of it with, you know, with our downtown partners, with the city, and start in the spirit of how the Blue Crab Festival that Seth started, and build from there. And then we'll get into some other questions as we proceed. Any thoughts or comments at this point? Um, yes, sir?
Is, do you think that the Blue Crab Festival in some form is gonna be coming back eventually?
I, I, I think it does. Um, and then there's one critical question that I've got coming up in a second, which really gonna make, I think, the difference as to how we move forward with the concept of going to Blue Crab. And so you can kind of share from the, of the small scale event that you guys were trying to do and your vision with that, what were, was there a theme or a thought process at that point, or were you just trying to actually be the catalyst to start creating a community partnership?
Um, I'd like to answer that with just kind of prefacing something beforehand. In no way whatsoever is anything I'm about to say concrete, set in stone, um, you know, inked anywhere. These are just thoughts, so please, you know, just, just take them for that, these are just thoughts. We were envisioning something that was potentially called Rhythm on the River. We were looking to attract a similar number to what you just suggested, about ten thousand people, uh, was our goal number. We were hoping to work with the prior vendors list that were given, um, or were offered to be given to us, uh, from the previous Blue Crab Festival. Some things that we talked about were what was working and what wasn't working with the event, and we were really curious tonight to hear what other people thought about what needed to be changed to make it profitable and to have the longevity of the event continue and, and not have this be another one done. So we talked about the hours, did we need to shorten the days? Do we need to shorten the hours? What type of events were we gonna include? And the underlying theme to it that we had moved forward with as a group was entertainment, music. And, and just like you said earlier, a catalog of music, a library of music, not one central theme, a multitude of ways to attract different people from different age groups and different communities, the surrounding communities, and really trying to draw people back in to Plaquah, into Putnam County, and get them to come and stay, uh, not just for the day, but for the night.
Okay. Um, question for the audience and the commission. Who are the stakeholders that we need to get to the table? What community partners do we need to get to the table as we begin to put together the placeholder? We've got PYP, uh...
The South Side Historic Neighborhood Association, coming off the Block of Porch Fest, would be, I think, a good source of, uh, music.
We discussed that too, I agree with you.
Who else?
Well, we, we, the SHNA did exactly what Katie was talking about. I mean, we brought in a whole variety of music genre.
Definitely. And also, while we're on music, Mr. Buckles is, uh, we've had some, a couple conversations about music as well, and you've done a little bit of research as it relates to music, you mind sharing?
So it depends on, I guess, the direction of the city and where everybody's gonna go, and how many nights, uh, as far as what kind of lineup we need to go with. But definitely inclusivity, it needs to be a theme, uh, different genres of music that are going to attract a variety of people. But the thing that really kind of excited me was we, we discussed the possibility of Sunday, uh, including a, like a sunrise service and some gospel stuff that, uh, I, I'm not sure where we're at with that, but we had some people check on that, so. And we'll have to speak with them about some stuff, so. Just a little bit of a shift from what it's been in the past, so. You know, it's been a long time since I've, you know, been a part of the Blue Crab Festival playing music down there, but, uh, I mean, I remember how great it was to me. And I know, you know, we all look back and probably think that things were better, you know, when we were younger, how much greater we were, but it really did seem to me like it was a really, really big deal. And, and I, I don't know what that generated for the city in terms of revenue and the local businesses, but, uh, it was a, a really cool event. I just feel like if, if we can have a theme with unity and try to work together with, and she mentioned some different organizations, and after hearing everybody, I think that's probably a great idea to try to partner with some people and figure some things out. But we don't have a, a specific lineup of people, it's gonna depend on budget and how many nights we're gonna try to do this.
Right. And so, Mr. Deloche?
Just to give you an idea, we, uh, Bellamy Brothers were a huge country western group, uh, state city party, raised there, extremely popular, they're a country music hall of fame. And we were able to get them at a really good price because they didn't have hard to go, it was time that we were doing anything else. And they called up and said, "We'd like to come," they called us and said, "We'd like to come back to the Blue Crab Festival." I said, "Well, we're not sure that we can afford to do it." Blackout stuff, he says, "Let me talk." And I said, "Okay." He said, "I'll, we'll come back. You get us a fishing guide that give us our room, it won't cost you a penny." Because they went fishing that, all day that Saturday, and they were the major, major groups. For them, the Bellamy Brothers spread the word. Alabama, musical group Alabama, has been here to fish constantly. Brad Paisley comes here twice a year to fish, I was told. So if you got all those people that come in, I mean, we have Jim City. We, we can't get like the Blue Crab Festival, we've become Jim City. Whatever.
Those are the connections that I'm looking for too. I think that, those are the connections our organization is looking for, is that positive feedback and the we can attitude to make this happen.
And so we definitely... ...to join Plaquah, and PYP have also been talking. We have successful partnership with Proctia Festival, and we are able to work well together, and we all need to revive, I think, some of it.
So revitalize the story in Plaquah. Also, well, DPI, Downtown Plaquah Inc., all those groups are necessary for what we got. Quanus Rotary, uh, all our civic organizations, African American Culture Arts Council, Pal is in the back of the room as well. Any other organizations that you guys can think of? Just like we said before, the Pilot Club, uh, getting those civic organizations, as well as our business owners involved, is gonna be a critical component. Well, we got, we got the newspaper here, uh, and, uh, we've got the chamber as well. And I invited, uh, both, uh, Mr. Leonard and also Ms. Jones in here. Ms. Jones, if you can, um, talk a little bit from the standpoint of tourist development and, uh, the historic role of the chamber as it relates to, uh, the Blue Crab Festival and, and other festivals, and how overnight stays all into the equation?
Sure. Um, first, I wanted to say one thing I don't think we've talked about very much, and George probably knows the answer to this, but one of the other large amounts of funds that y'all received were big level sponsors. And over the years, that big money dwindled as well. But it was significant amount in sponsorship, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
So, just a source I just wanted to mention because I hadn't heard anybody talk to that.
Florida Lottery was a major sponsor. Some of it, some of it, back in that time. Other people be bound, but you, you gotta, you gotta open your books up, you've gotta see what, what you're doing. You gotta know what you're doing with their money. That hasn't happened lately.
Correct, exactly.
So basically, you know, a four-day event creates a huge economic impact to the city that a one-day festival does not. Overnight, even a two or three day, the difference in the industry standards are like if you have a one-day visitor, it's a twenty-five dollar value to the community times how many people you have. If it's an overnight guest, that ramps up to like two-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars per person in economic value. So you can see where you can go from a ten-thousand-dollar festival impact to a two-point-five-million-dollar economic impact. I think one of the years that the University of Florida did that study and the, um, computations and surveys, the impact was right about two-point-two million. But I'm pulling by memory, I didn't really get a chance to pull a lot of stuff together. The workshop tonight, um, the Tourism Development Council started after Blue Crab was functioning. Um, I believe our first couple of years were very low income, like in ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, that money wasn't very much. I don't know that we funded them early out without my notes, but obviously, starting probably in ninety-six, ninety-seven, um, they were one of the groups we funded a significant amount of tourism dollars for, along with the other festivals, uh, Blueberry and the Catfish. At that time, there were, you know, fewer festivals competing for the dollars that were available. So, uh, how many years they funded them, I don't know off the top of my head, but certainly many.
And last year, we actually, when Buddy Thompson came forward last year to TDC, one of the things that he talked about was the loss of Florida Lottery and some of the other sponsors out there.
And swabs.
Right. And we, we approved him for ten, what, ten thousand?
How much?
Ten thousand from Tourism Development Council, uh, to help with the, I think he indicated it was fifteen thousand dollars that he, that he lost in major sponsorship to that point. And from the TDC side, we were able to see the value of the festival with the amount of time it was. And in order to help recapture those dollars, there was ten thousand dollars that we allocated, and that money can be used, and, and just so that they know what can TDC dollars be used for?
It can be used for advertising, marketing the event, and, uh, special event insurance. That's a requirement, at least two-million-dollar liability, so.
Right.
That's basically it.
And so there are opportunities, uh, to do the requests, uh, through TDC, uh, to try to get funding. And also, one of the things that Bartram did with the city was Bartram actually got a loan. And for the last few years, Bartram has got a loan from the CRA, which is our Community redevelopment agency. And in the amount of nine thousand dollars, and they've actually repaid that loan back both times. We've had historically opportunities where we've gone in and, and actually waived certain fees that are in place. Uh, but I think where we are today, it's, maybe it's a different concept. And I think one of the things that we, from the city side, uh, is, maybe it's a different approach, and we'll, and we'll get into that in a second. Mr. Leonard, you, as you sit here today, the newspapers' role, I definitely, I think, from an advertising standpoint, there's gonna be a critical piece that comes out of that, um, part of it. What other collaborative efforts can that we get from the newspaper as it relates to trying to push Blue Crab?
Well, we can certainly promote the fact that there, uh, the towel has not been thrown in and that the community is coming together in a very positive and energetic way to put together a festival that weekend. And that Plaquah, uh, the people of Plaquah are committed to, um, claiming Memorial Day weekend and keeping that for, for us, for this year and for the future. And then we can talk about types of things that need to be done and, um, to, you know, whenever there's anything that happens related to the, the festival, photos of committees working, talk about different things that need to occur, uh, new profiles of, of folks in action. We can do a lot about that, and we, you know, if it's good for Butler County and Plaquah, it's good for the Plaquadale News.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say one more thing concerning the Tourism Development Council and grants. We are right now in the final grant process for this fiscal year in February. So whoever may be thinking about doing a multiple-day event needs to go to either our website or to our office, get that application, get that scheduled timeframe, so they will know about the deadlines and the meeting times.
And one of the things that we want to talk about, the reason we want to do the multi-day event instead of just on one day, is because of the tur- the tourism dollars that are, that are accessible at the point that it becomes a multiple-day event. And so with that being said, uh, I guess by thoughts in this room, I guess we'll just show our hands and make it easier from a business standpoint. A two-day event, how many people believe that we should do a two-day event versus a three-day event? For a Friday, like, instead of doing a, do a Friday, Saturday, or Saturday, Sunday event as opposed to doing, uh, just a, as opposed to doing a Friday through Sunday event?
You're talking about this year only?
This year only, this year only.
Two-day relative to three?
Who, who believes that we should do, what, who believes that we should do a two-day event and what two days? Maybe that's the question?
Saturday and Sunday.
Who, Saturday, Sunday? My show fans?
Oh, are we voting?
I mean, everybody just showed their hands.
Three is too much.
Huh?
I think it's Memorial Day, so we're just talking about the gap. We don't do three.
Yeah.
Just to contribute some structure into what, uh, what we might need. If you did Friday night, Saturday, and Sunday, and on Saturday and Sunday you had ten hours of music, you're gonna need ten bands. You could have two bands on Friday night, four bands on Saturday, and four bands on Sunday to run it up to nine, ten o'clock at night, starting around noon. That would require ten bands. Running, playing two hours apiece plus time for changeover.
That's a lot of music.
I'm telling you.
He's an hour, hour per band?
Two hours per band and giving a half an hour of changeover time.
That's a lot.
If you got one stage, you got downtime.
That's a lot of...
I mean, that's two and a half days, Saturday, Sunday, and then Monday for your recognition of Memorial Day activity.
Uh, Mr. Bates?
Yeah, Benji Bates, and that's what we originally planned. And I think our main thing was, we would rather do something really well in a short amount of time and leave an impression and put with the group of the year. We want to have an experience. You know, we wanted to be a quality event, and let's do something great. And it might be, you know, a Friday kickoff, a family day on Saturday, a community church day on Sunday, and set the bar moving forward. You know, instead of trying to spread something out to fill time, and again, we have other activities. We want them on the river, you know, hey, take Sunday, you know, Monday, experience Plaquah, do other things, let's get them here. So that was kind of our concept, you know, was about that quality experience.
It's kind of the same thing that we've discussed, uh, I've kind of had multiple conversations with Matt Buckles about certain days, and go ahead, Matt.
So in, in speaking with, uh, I believe it was Buddy Thompson and a couple other people that have been associated with the festival, uh, the consensus was Friday night was the big beer night. That was the night that everybody came out and a lot of revenue came in, uh, from the alcohol sales at the beer tent under the, you know, the entertainer. The Saturday was, you know, an all-day thing, obviously. Uh, the Sunday that we had kind of spoke about was more of a community-based thing and trying to organize potentially some of the local churches and have maybe a service, some fires, uh, some gospel, entertainment, and then probably wrapping up. We're gonna have to pay the same to set up the tent. It's there, the expense for the tent's gonna be there, and it's just a question of, they're gonna tear it down, if we set up for one day, they still have to set up and tear it down, so the extra day is not gonna be a huge expense. day is not gonna be a huge expense, and the sound engineers and those things, they're gonna be there anyway. So, it's gonna, it's gonna benefit, I think it would, we would bring in more money, the carnival part of it, having the extra day for the families to take their kids to the carnival. I think there's opportunities there that if we just did the one full day and the night before, we don't capitalize on. And Saturday is a given, but Sunday was the other, you know, if you did Friday and Saturday, or if you did Saturday, Sunday, if you did it all day Sunday, that's, that's two full days, which is a lot, and, you know, you might not be able to include the gospel component in the, in the community and churches, that I think would be a really neat shift. But obviously, we're here to discuss a million different possibilities, so nothing said in the stall might take us.
Right. And one of the thought processes of the three, of the weekend event Friday and Sunday, including the Sunday community type event, you've got 67 churches alone in the city of Palatka, in the city limits. And so, you know, there are opportunities to showcase your local churches, and then the other side of it is, you've got a number of professional gospel artists. You've got, for example, Punch Baldwin, who's the lead singer for the Georgia Mass Choir. She lives behind, she lives right here in Palatka, in the city limits. You've got Leandria Johnson, who's a gospel, who's a Grammy Award winner, who's from Palatka.
That's Summer Frost, and he's Palatka's gospel singer.
Right.
That's really going big now.
And so, Palatka has always been historically known for gospel singers, quartets, and things of that nature over the years. And that was one of the things the Blue Crab Festival had for a number of years, was those quartets and things of that nature come out. And so, we can do that, and those, and tie that in with the faith-based, with the faith-based community and actually give a pretty strong attendance, I think, if we collaborate and work it right, you know, you know, talking to organizations like Central Republican Ministerial Alliance, and going from there. Yes, sir.
The African-American culture arts were actually going forward to try to put together gospel extravagance. So, we're willing to put our event off to partner with the Blue Crab or whatever come as a result of this, because I do think that component of Sunday will be a big vibe, and that'll show the unity that we really want here in our community. So, we're willing to put off to help make sure that that Sunday, if that's what's so decided, that it happens. I've already been in communication with Leanne or Leandria, and she's committed, if, you know, she just wants to go, she wants to come back home, can't go anywhere else, she should be able to come back home. So, definitely, the ball has been rolling, and I would personally like to see it. When we first got elected, we did One Palatka Under God, and we packed out Bethel Baptist with not even standing room.
AME.
AME, I'm sorry. AME without standing room, and it was a congregation of mixed individuals from all walks of life. And I just think we need to make that happen if we do this event that we can.
And also, the Arts Council is at the city act to provide some funding for their summer concert series. And so, I've talked to Denise about in the past, and she has been willing also to kind of do exactly what Mr. Russo said, which was try to get additional bands now to help out from that standpoint. So, all those things are out there. It's just a matter of now. I want to go through, got a couple factors, and maybe we've touched on some of them already, and just talk about these things, and then we'll get to next steps, and we'll be out of here by seven for sure. As we talk about Blue Crab, we've, we've, are we kind of all of the same mindset that Friday to Sunday is, we can try to make that doable?
Yeah.
Everybody kind of like.
Friday night.
Friday night to Sunday night, yeah. Friday, I go to work.
We agree. That's what we mentally prepared ourselves for. Can I just take a minute to kind of touch back on a couple of things that we talked about, just kind of agree, concur with a few people? We are absolutely concerned with heads and beds. We understand that this needs to be a multiple-day event. And then I would love to reach out and kind of get an idea of the major sponsors that you had in the past, about how much they were bringing in, and about how much of that accounted for your total budget. And then, as far as, kind of along the thought process of, process of what would this event be like, I think Benji, I'm not sure anyone, brought up the idea of, we want there to be more there. We really do, I think, strive to make our events experiential, something that you walk away with a memory. And the way Blue Crab used to be, there were so many unique opportunities to make memories there, and it was, it really was a highlight of the event. So, we hope to do, we hope to look for some unique things for people to do.
Anything else?
Sorry, I thought Dana was trying to get my attention. I saw a hand. Okay. Thank you, Michael, for helping us. We can't do this without you. I really truly appreciate that. Anything you can do is going to be absolutely beneficial. And then to touch back on the CRA loan, what are the loan limits? What is the maximum loan the CRA will award?
It's kind of like, sorry, I guess. It depends on, there's some metrics that go into it. If you get with Mamby Tucker, she can kind of give you some different, I mean, the largest loan thus far has been the $9,000.
Okay, zero interest.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. If you know anything about where I work, that was my next question.
All right. And so?
One comment. Just thought about it. When we talked about vendors, there's resellers and there's quality vendors. And I was just cautioning you, because they're pretty tricky. We did a festival for a couple of years, unfortunately, we had to, but a lot of vendors that want to come and want to pray up and bring you money orders are usually the resellers. And if you want people to come back and enjoy the experience, you really want quality vendors, and there's a huge difference.
I'm really glad that you brought that up. That's something that we have painstakingly discussed, is the type of vendor that we want there, and what sort of screening processes we can put in place to make sure that we have quality vendors that lead to an ideal experience for the people who may be visiting Putnam County for the first time, and for our residents that are here, and for our visitors that are, that are coming frequently. We want them to enjoy this event and walk away saying they did it right.
One thing our vendors had, that we had in their arts and crafts event, there had to be an arts and crafts event, there's nothing that could have been commercially produced. If you walked past their booth, they had anything that's commercially produced, they were out of there. They didn't qualify. And that's what a lot of people came to see. If you want to sell something commercially produced, you were totally in a different area, something different happened, and that's why one thing we're successful at, is you can go commercially get a lot of these things like that, but good arts and crafts and hard vendors make a difference in the people that are there.
They do, and we are a young organization. We're in our infancy, and any coaching, any mentoring, we are so open for it. I'm sure we'll be knocking at your door, trying to make sure that we do right by everyone.
Got anything else?
No, sir.
Okay.
That's what, talk about good, I am a festival person. I love a festival. I'm just, to go there for the experiences of vendors, food. Two really good local examples of festivals, three really good local examples of festivals, of course, it's the Catfish Festival in Crescent City, that's an excellent festival. The Blueberry Festival in Bosswick, love the Blueberry Festival, and the Strawberry Festival in Stark. I don't know if you guys have, that's a great festival, very much like Blue Crab. They just don't go into the night, but they have, you know, their vendor setup is awesome, they've got great vendors, their food's good, they have entertainment going on. It's a nice festival. It doesn't have to, you know, I mean, it's not on the scale of Blue Crab, it doesn't have those kind of hours, but if you're just starting off with a festival, those are some really good examples. I was very involved with the beer operation for Blue Crab because I was kind of in charge of, under CJ, who was the head beer person, well, she was actually the organizer for many years, she took over as like the chairperson of the festival. And I want to say for 12 or 13 years, I actually was there at Blue Crab from noon Friday until 5:00 PM on Monday, just went home for naps and showers, running that beer operation. Friday night, the reason that the beer made the money was because it was the only thing going on on Friday night. They had a couple of the food vendors set up, none of the rest of the vendors were set up. And GP did fireworks that night. That was kind of the big draw, that was like a family draw, but it was locals' night. That was when all the locals came down to Blue Crab. And so, the beer was the only thing making any money, and that was always the big moneymaker, but Friday and Saturday, that was the major beer. I'm talking, you know, Friday after, like, or Saturday afternoon at two closing times, Sunday afternoon to closing time. The hotter it got, the more people got hungry, they went to the crab booth, they got their crabs, they walked across the street, they got their beer, they sat down. I mean, there were, you know, it was lines out to St. John's Avenue. It was constant go-go-go. Jonathan remembers, he came in and worked the beer tent with us. Was that a Saturday night?
Yeah.
And you don't stop. It's non-stop. Yeah, going on. But that was a big beer, that was a big moneymaker for them. They, they, that was their bread and butter for the festival, and Burkhart Distributors was also a sponsor.
They were a huge sponsor.
Huge sponsor.
And we've reached out to some of those people, just to kind of get a, I think we've done a pretty good job thus far doing our homework. I think we're all kind of right in line so far, and I think you're saying is sounding totally foreign.
Go ahead.
My question is, and just for making sure that I'm on the right page, are we looking for, are we, can we safely say that PYP is going to be the face or the organization that brings it together, everybody else who wants to make this happen? Or, I'm just trying to make sure that, what's the position for what going forward, how is it gonna work?
We have a board meeting tomorrow night. Our special events committee brings forward any events that we want to do to the board, and the board will vote most likely tomorrow night. Will vote tomorrow night.
So, part of our thought was that we would kind of see what the interest was to, is there another group that was gonna come and seek, so we've kind of seen that it's not. So, it would definitely be something that we, you know, we've talked heavily about.
And just for record, give your name.
David Hart.
Thanks, David.
And I also want to say that there were a lot of smaller contributors to the Blue Crab Festival that they also made money at. There was a crab cook-off, that was always, wasn't that on?
The seafood cook-off, that happened on Saturday.
Well, it was seafood, but then they called it crab, and Wanda was in charge of that. That was on Saturday morning. They had the Jell-O jump that they sold the keys for, remember? And Mary, Mary was in charge of that.
At that time, the Jell-O jump, it was originally the Blue Crab Festival and used boat.
Used boat sail, right.
It was so big that there was no place to put the keys. Jell-O jump was still a deal that happened.
Yeah. It went for years. In fact, I, you know.
And Jell-O Company actually sent us like 8,000 boxes of Jell-O.
Of Jell-O, and they filled the pool with it, and there were keys all at the bottom of the pool that you could, you know, and you bought a chance, and then you dumped in and pulled it.
I actually remember that.
Yeah, my verse.
So, what I might be willing to do is to give my email address, and as you think of these ideas, please send them to me in an email so we can start organizing them.
And the entertainment wasn't all bands. They had magicians, they had other types of entertainers, they had cooking displays.
Yes, ma'am.
They had all kinds of stuff going on. It wasn't, but the bands really started almost around 2:00 in the afternoon and went pretty much non-stop after that, except for the breaks to set up new bands.
I'll make sure you have my email address.
Moving forward, after, so, one of the, one of the things I also want to talk about is structure of the festival, moving forward, where we are. I think the biggest thing with the commission is, we want to make sure that we never find ourselves in this position again, and so that there's continuity with the Memorial Day Weekend Festival, and that we don't lose our spot on the state calendar or the regional calendar as it relates to this particular weekend by basically kind of putting some of our financial destiny into the hands of other organizations in so many ways. Because I think the benefit, and when you talk Palatka around, when we go out to Northeast Florida League of Cities, or we go to Florida League of Cities, people are always saying in Palatka, hey, you guys have the Blue Crab Festival. So, the festival has its own name and its own brand, and so, the first question, and I'm asking it, and I really want to get some conversation, because mostly you've read Buddy, you read Buddy Thompson's statement about the brand. And so, the question is, do we want to in some way create our own Blue Crab brand? Do we want to have the name Blue Crab incorporated into the festival as we move forward? Yes, sir.
I think at this point, you have to have Blue Crab there. If we had a year to make it happen, and we could build that brand straight here, that's one thing. We don't have that kind of time to make that happen this year. So, if they have all the rights to Palatka's Blue Crab Festival, we can make a Gem City Blue Crab Festival.
They got all the rights to Blue Crab Festival, Inc. They don't have the rights to Palatka Blue Crab Festival, it's a different corporation. That's in an inaccurate status. They've got, they've trademarked the logo.
Okay. And that logo was trademarked, like the second year that it went in.
There are two trademark logos.
Yeah, okay.
And the second one was trademarked, that was the one where they had the crab with the big teeth and, you know.
Big eyes.
Yeah, the big eyes, yeah. And so, that's also trademarked, but that's the logo that's trademarked, it's not the name.
One about the name, I mean, the name itself, Palatka Blue Crab Festival, has anybody tried to trademark it, have they tried to copyright it, have they, have they done anything like that so that it's not available for use?
It's only, we've, we've kind of looked at it and had some conversation on it. What I've seen through research thus far, and Mr. Leonard, you can kind of tell me, we saw where Palatka Blue Crab Festival, Inc. is a state, is a state corporation that's in an active status. I haven't seen anything, when you do a trademark logo, that says that that's trademarked.
Copyright the name.
You would copyright the name. No copyright on that and no trademark on the logo for that particular item.
And, Mr. Holmes, is there a sunset on trademarks?
I don't honestly know, but of course, that's, the trademark law, the whole different brand of law, of federal in nature, but I don't, if there is a sunset, it's a long time. I mean, a trademark is something that sticks around for a long time, and you can keep renewing it.
With some re-doing license.
Right. And I don't know that you would trademark a name, they trademark the logo with the crab with the big eyes. Right. I think you would copyright a name. And we can find out, that's easy enough to find out if it's copyrighted. I'm just, I think as you move forward, from the very early stages, you need to decide what your name's gonna be, because otherwise, you guys are gonna be bouncing around with different names and ideas, and the first thing you know is gonna end up with a, you know, a name that comes by, by happenstance or chance, not by one that you thought out. So, I think names on the front burner first right up.
Can the paper do a, in the paper maybe do like some type of a question on the online version, or as to, as to what it says?
What people would, what people would want it to be called? Yes, sir. We'd certainly use that. I mean, the other thought I had was that as much as possible, I think any group going forward would want to embrace the former Blue Crab, the folks in part of this effort, so that, you know, we don't want to go trying to take away what their Blue Crab Festival name, we want to try to continue using that with their permission.
Well, one of the things that Buddy Thompson talked about, and you've obviously indicated that, he was open to sharing his vendor list, and he, and he also alluded to the 30th anniversary coming up and what he would do. My biggest issue is, we kind of relied upon his assurances in October about moving forward with the festival this year, and, you know, a few weeks ago, it's, we're not doing it. And so, we found ourselves in the same exact position relying on that word that we were before. And so, I do think that there's a benefit to continuing the relationship, and there is no, you know, there is no malice or any type of negative feelings. It's just unfortunate for this community that the festival that has gone on for 28 years has kind of come to an abrupt halt when most people see it and understand that it should be profitable because of the number of people that you have coming into this community. And so, I think one of the big concerns we have was that community organizations and community entities were not as involved as they have been in the past, and it basically kind of fell at the hands of a handful of folks within their corporation without really, I think, the substantial effort to get local sponsors in, you know, to get the GPs. I think, the substantial effort to get local sponsors in, you know, to get the GPs, the Beck, the Seminole Electric, all those folks, the Palaca Daily Newses, to get those folks in here to come in, but also, some of the smaller businesses in this community. Because, you know, at the end of the day, a few hundred dollar, $250 sponsorships, if you add, if you add enough of them up, they equal the $5,000 sponsorship or the $10,000 sponsorship. And there are folks here who are willing to be on the back of that t-shirt, and they're willing to do some other things to benefit them, because at the end of the day, having that traffic in that business region creates additional financial opportunities. And so, that was one of the things that we had. So, moving forward, the question is, you know, we're, and I guess Mr. Holmes was gonna do some research on.
Yeah, I am, but what I've just been handed showed that the trademarks expired in 2007, and they were held by downtown Palaca, Inc.
Wow.
Where's Accorigi applying for?
There are two trademarks, aren't there?
Both of them were held by downtown Palaca, Inc., and they both expired in 2007.
Sounds like that needs to be something we jump on to.
The Blue Crab obviously has, already has name recognition and probably about a draw. However, what's the consensus of the group, would that hurt the brand to have a smaller festival, and you're gonna have all these people that have had experiences in the past show up for a lesser, does that hurt, or are we gonna capitalize on the name recognition? Is there a detriment there?
And that's my concern.
That's my too.
Because what I don't want to see happen is that we use the Palaca Young Professionals as a placeholder in what we consider to be a success for the organization, and then next year, we have Blue Crab Festival who says they want to return in 2020, and then we just be pushed off the map. So, that's my concern for the whole thing. And I think even going outside of this meeting, with not truly having a commitment from the Palaca Young Professionals, that's again, because of a meeting that has to happen, I still feel like we at ground zero. And then again, I don't want, when I say ground zero, not in a negative way, but what are we gonna do? How are we gonna make this happen? Because if they have an successful event, I'm quite sure just as soon as it happens, they're gonna be putting in to have that placeholder for next year, putting in that application. So, how would we handle that situation?
Do you mind if I?
Go ahead.
So, yesterday, we had a meeting, and you had a quorum of our board members present who all tentatively agreed to vote yea tomorrow. So, unless something has transpired in the past 24 hours that I'm completely unaware of.
So, you got to vote and re-vote?
I think you're, I think you're, I think we're gonna be okay.
So, the question still remains, what about the Blue Crab Festival trying to make a return back?
So, I would say going forward, you know, this year it may be the Rhythm on the River. That doesn't mean next year it couldn't be the Blue Crabs Rhythm on the River, or something to that effect, that this year it's a placeholder and we play up, it's Memorial Weekend, because that's what people care, is the weekend. So, we could play that up now, that it's that weekend, and then next year, maybe it's a combined.
But having a two-year void, but does having a two-year void lock you out of the folks who would traditionally come here?
Right. But does having this conversation of what else is listed on here, does, is that not in vain, because if the organization is gonna be putting it on, see what I'm saying? Like?
Not really, we'll run through, I don't think so.
Well, the article in the Palaca Daily News a few days ago described one of the issues with Blue Crab, and that was the fact that it lost sources of revenues, it lost a few revenue streams due to the reconfiguration of the downtown, of the riverfront. And therefore, we can conclude that the Blue Crab is going to change in some fundamental way as we move forward, because they don't have the space for the carnival rides and all the other revenue streams that they had before.
Mr. Griffin.
May I address that?
The footprint for Blue Crab, as you know, and you've worked with them on the layout for a number of years, how much different has it been over the years?
We must definitely have lost some real estate, as we put it in the paper, but what we haven't realized, they lost a lot of volunteer resources, which meant they probably lost a lot of initiative to reconfigure their layout. We worked within the confines of the eight acre park and adjacent roadways. You can fit their tent, which takes up a footprint of approximately 90 by, you know, 130, or you could cut that in half and do cost and get an 80 by 120, and only spend, you know, three grand instead of six grand. Both of those fit on the northern end of the park now with the relocation of the clock tower. You can fit their original beer tent down there, you can fit their carnival, you can fit upwards of 400 vendors within the first two blocks of the riverfront. It's just a matter of going, how to put the puzzle together.
And what about extending it? The people that are between 8th and 9th Street have been begging for it to come to them and stop at 7:00, and that next two blocks, if you needed places for vendors.
We're always open to suggestions.
I'll tell you from experience, my business was on 10th Street. I would love to see it come that far. We tried to extend it a couple of times, people just didn't walk that far. It's a hot weekend, it didn't happen. We tried to spread it out, so it's making you go further, you know, we didn't particularly go past 9th Street because of.
But the dairy queen man, the eagle doesn't love to have them come down there.
And I love, I love that people right there, my partner, a lot of backup.
You had one thing, though, it is a hot weekend.
It's a hot weekend. Even though we moved people further down, those vendors that were on that end did not, people just quit walking. And we had to back them, call them back.
So, so here we are, here we are, in this room. Your thought is not to use the Blue Crab name this year?
Or any affiliation?
I've got to, to address the name, I am one person within a community, and I'm so, I'm so willing to listen to what anybody else has to say. What our group had discussed was using Rhythm on the River this year, and paring down what we had done in the past as far as Blue Crab was concerned, focusing more on an experiential event, backing up, talking about some of the things, kayaking experience, fishing experience for the kids, surf simulators, carnival rides. We've talked to people who operate float plans and helicopters, again, giving people something that they truly walk away with, where they go, wow, that's, that's our goal. And then, as far as the expansion, after talking with several people who have involved in emergency medical services over the past few years, if we're gonna do this, and if we're gonna do it well, and if people are gonna have not a good time, but a great time, and think this was well thought out, I don't think we can do that this year. And it's been tried, and it hasn't worked in the past.
Okay. Mr. Thompson?
I suggest, and I think it would be better if we keep Palaca Blue Crab Festival, because that's what people know. The other title could be a subtitle under that, but I think, you know, go ahead and let's, if we're gonna do something this year, let's keep that name in there for this year. Let people also know as we're talking with them, that, hey, we also going to be doing this the next year, and you know, start getting a plan, so if they can't persist that this year, they know it's coming next year, the name stays the same and it doesn't have to change, as we're doing this communications out.
Totally okay with that.
I agree with that.
So, my show hand to this room. After Mr. Leonard.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I'm not an expert, but my training teaches me that two critical components to marketing are continuity and repetition. And that Blue Crab Festival resonates with people all around the region, and if we call it Blue Crab, Rhythm on the River, just having that Blue Crab name as part of what we do.
It's gonna be a draw.
Has tremendous value. I mean, it's all in one year. If we let it go two years, people have short memories. And we're toast.
I'll tell you something, I'll tell you something else, in my opinion, you can call it whatever you want to, people are still gonna judge it by the old Blue Crab Festival. I don't think that you disassociate the event from the past by changing the name. So, if you're worried about disappointing people, I think that the disappointment's gonna come by the nature of the event, not the name. I don't think that if they come down, and you don't call it Blue Crab, you call it Rhythm on the Ri, on the River, and it's not what it used to be, I don't think you're gonna have them say, oh, well, this isn't Blue Crab, and next year when they call it Blue Crab, it's gonna be way different. I think they're gonna say, Memorial Day Weekend, it's in Palaca, it's on the river, call it whatever you want to, they're still gonna judge you by the past. And I think you're 100% right, just about to sense, if you make it quality, and you start, you know, you pump the idea of making it bigger and better next year, I don't think you'd lose that much. I think the name recognition's huge.
I said one question before we move, has anybody reached out to make sure we have a source so y'all will actually have the Blue Crab available, whether it's a small quantity or a large one from the state association?
Dana.
I know, there's a lot of things going on in the waters right now.
No, that's okay. And to answer that question, you have to keep in mind that our organization was not talking about calling it the Blue Crab. We were talking about.
That's why I asked the question, I just wanted to know if anybody.
So, Blue Crab for us and the fact that it's early in the season, like you said earlier, one of the experiential aspects that we discussed was really working our food truck vendors that we had partnered with in the past. We came across an excellent resource in Jacksonville, who's an organizer of a few dozen food trucks, and we wanted to make, we wanted to really amp up the dining experience there. You know, still having the traditional fried things that we all love and look forward to at events like this, but giving some other options as well. So, we were not necessarily concerned with the availability of Blue Crab.
Well, people gonna come looking for that crab.
They gonna be looking for it.
And I'm sure.
They'll look at the name for sure.
And I'm sure people will come and they'll drive by on a Monday, too, if we're not open on a Monday.
So, so the question, the vote is here, just my show hand. How many believe that you have to keep the Blue Crab name, my show hands? Consistency. How, and how many don't? You guys want to expound, you want to know, your thought processes, so we can kind of hear?
So many questions I have. How are we gonna stop this from happening again in the future? How do you, how does the government here handle the Blue Crab Festival versus, and the interest you have in it, versus the Exaly Festival and Crescent City, and, you know what I'm saying? I guess it's that, the notoriety of Blue Crab and how much money it makes maybe for the community, maybe that's why you have a certain position on it. I feel like what you want to do, I think it's a great idea, but I think it's just on a Memorial Day Weekend, save the Blue Crab for one, because those people that come with the name Blue Crab, when they come, they're gonna be disappointed. No matter how good, whatever you do, it's not, it's, you know, you don't have enough time. Two things are going on here, and every time is important. And one thing is an event for this community, and the other one's planned for the Blue Crab Festival.
Great points.
I think that's a moot concern, because as Kate has pointed out, if you create a positive experience, it's gonna establish itself, and it's gonna have its reputation. So, this year is gonna be so large, but as, as we gain experience, or as we work with the Blue Crab, Inc., and produce an event that's going to be positive, it's really, it's really our concern about ruining the Blue Crab name is a moot point. Because if we, if we work together and establish a beautiful event for the community, it is going to be successful regardless of what people think this first year.
On a separate note, what they were doing, whether it be, you know, being irresponsible fiscally or whatever, what they were doing obviously did not work, or they would still be thriving. So, we do have to make some changes regardless, whether it be the Blue Crab Festival, you know, reinvents itself, or someone comes in their place.
The brand, so, so this is the, you can have a strong brand and a bad product. And so, the thing is, is the perception of the public to the product. One of the major complaints I heard about the Blue Crab Festival consistently was that there were not enough Blue Crabs. And that was always the complaint. And I personally witnessed, one year, they ran out Blue Crab by 12 o'clock, and we actually, and it was a restaurateur from Jacksonville was here, and he actually made a call to one of his vendors, and got a, and got like 1,600 pounds coming in, and I actually called a couple of local vendors, and one of the folks that they had in, and got them to come in. What Blue Crab had was an exclusive rights Blue Crab vendor, that they got a portion of their proceeds from them, roughly about 25% from that vendor. And so, in that situation, you only had one place that you could get crab. They opened up for one additional vendor who had a garlic crab restaurant, so you had Crab Stop out of Daytona actually come in with a food truck, and they were there, but you got a number of people in this community who actually sell Blue Crabs and Garlic Crabs from food trucks and out in the surrounding areas. So, and they got their own people that they go to to get the product. I watched Crab Stop sell 650 pounds of Blue Crabs in like two hours. And so, you know, which was just crazy, they sold out before they got started, and they had to reopen. But the vendor who was responsible for selling from Friday to Monday, they, they came with no stop from Louisiana. And so, that's where the issues come in, and you have, and you know, so when Dana, well, so when people in the back talk about how you build a relationship with the Crab Association, that becomes critical.
When the Blue Crab Festival started, we expected to be that, I mean, very fast. And the vendor that we had was a local vendor, and he had the people, one of the things that we were told by everybody, it's the brief weekend you have it, it's not an ideal time to be harvesting Blue Crab, it's one of the worst times you can have harvesting Blue Crab. But Ann Crabtree personally went out there, and she made it her business to go find somebody that could make sure we have all the Blue Crabs we have, as long as I was associated with it, after she had that particular person, I don't know who it was, but that, we never ran out of Blue Crab after that. And he told me that he sold six tons on Saturday.
When I was associated with the festival, they never ran out of Blue Crab. In fact, they were running around giving away boxes of Blue Crab.
We're gonna get here in a second, just quickly.
I'm kind of getting mixed messages, I just want to know what I need to tell my board tomorrow? Do we want to serve Blue Crabs at this event, or do we not want to serve Blue Crabs?
Tell your board, you went to, tell your board, you went to a meeting yesterday, and now you're sending people in the rooms that are keeping that.
Because it's apparently not a good time of year to harvest the crabs.
I mean, it's, I mean, it was clear, just about everybody there, and the audience kind of had their hand up.
Yes, and I voted no, but the reason why is because if you don't have Blue Crab available, you shouldn't be marketing that name. That's my only.
So, 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 here we go. So, let me, let me move this forward, because the time is getting later here, and we're kind of, and.
That's true.
And so.
If I have no crab, I'll take shrimp.
One of the biggest questions that comes up, and I think you asked an excellent question, and that question was, should the city get into the festival business? And that's the question. We talked about how do we create continuity for this particular festival, and I think the question about whether we, you know, what do you do for the Daily, or in some of the other festivals that come through, but should the city use this opportunity to have to create its own festival in the future going forward? And so, there are a lot of cities, you go to Miami Gardens, Jazz in the Gardens is a city-run festival, and it has grown from being in River Beach to being in Miami Gardens, and it's a, you know, it's a, it's a huge festival. You've got other cities that do festivals as well, but the question here is, do you guys think that the city should go into the festival business and do an RFP where there's a local organization or someone else who actually comes in and runs that festival?
I think it should be someone that's to come in and run that festival.
Anybody else?
Well, I want to say, I don't think the festival should go away, because people, as we travel, know us by the vast tournaments we have and in the crab festival.
Should the city go into the festival business, and, the question's in the back, was should the city go into the festival business and create an RFP for organizations who run the festival, or a company or something that's going, kind of, go out, sorry, Mr. Griffin.
I was gonna say, why don't we look at letting this group that's interested now, and see how it works. If it works good, then maybe that may be the catalyst we need for it to start. If it doesn't, not let it go away, but the city step in and do what it needs to do. It's got to have people who do it, and in the past, it's been done by volunteers and people who love the city.
I would say, I personally, I think that we should, do a RFP, and allow, if this group is the one that wants to help, you know, charity to do that, that way it keeps some form of accountability, so that what has happened in the past don't happen moving forward. But I would say yes to that question.
Are you talking about for this year?
No.
No.
Well, this is a long-term decision, and I think it's gonna be strongly influenced by our relationship with Blue Crab Festival, Inc.
If, if, if this is something that the Palaca Young Professionals is going to take on and be sort of the central repository for the Blue Crab and the massive undertaking of it, I think I could speak for the majority of our group and say that we would not want to be working on it. to be working with the city in that capacity.
The problem is, if you RFP, if people are, a lot of people are going to want to return for their time investment. They're gonna, they're not going to want to do it as a volunteer, on a volunteer basis for the benefit of the community if they're going to pay a source to actually put on the festival.
Like hiring a staff that's in here to do festivals?
Yeah, that was my-
Neither did I, neither.
It sounds like more to like the Main Street managers, and then for doing the third Friday event, that's not something that is here anymore, but when they have the Main Street manager, that would be something that, that's something that you wouldn't want. But to have somebody that wasn't just giving it to all the employees you already have, I mean, I'd rather do more than our group.
No, I'm, I'm talking about, and, and hiring an actual company, or hire an actual company that, if you go to an RFP and a company comes in and says, we're going to do it for this, or let's say, PYP comes in and says, we're going to do a festival for this, and they're the most qualified at that time to put it on. You've got a contract, you've got metrics, you've got expectations, you've got all these different things in place to make that happen. There are companies that do that, that are promotion companies.
You might could look to seek to have somebody give you some advice, but of course, hiring somebody to do that, I'm totally against that. One of the things that Blue Crab Festival did is it brought the downtown Main Street people together. They came together as a part of it, they were a part of it. I think you take the personality away from it if you do that. I think PYP, I'm 100% behind them, and let's make it happen.
So, the question is, what happened to the downtown Main Street people coming together so that we found ourselves in this situation?
The difference of who was there, some people felt it wasn't as important to have, and see where the Main Street is at this point.
I think I can offer something that might put every one of these, and that is, from inception, Polack Young Professionals has offered to show their books to anyone who would like to look at them.
By rule, you have to anyway. By the city ordinance.
What I'm getting at is that we're not going to shut our books on you, and we're not going to say, you can't see this, you're not going to have that issue with us. We're more than willing to be transparent, and that's something that we take pride in. And I'm standing here in front of a room of 30 people saying that, so I, I hope you can take me seriously.
But having experienced the issues that we had in the past, and making that request, and once we made that request, the festival ceased to exist, we're not going to experience that anymore.
Okay.
I've been trying to say, and I think, I, I think we want to accomplish the same thing, but we are having to, we are having so many different conversations here, and we are not, it's just everywhere. Because from what I got from the Polack Young Professionals is, the experience did not even include blue crab. So, I feel that they're being pushed to do something that they originally did not set out to do.
I would agree with you.
So, if they wanted to-
But you didn't say anything about it, when, you didn't say you felt like you were being pushed, you said you were accommodating before, and now it's-
So, she was making herself open to ideas, which is the right thing to do, which if we're using them as a placeholder, why not just have Rhythm on the River, and then come back and build the brand of Blue Crab Festival? Because again, that's not what they wanted to do, and I'm going to be the person to put it out there. I know she was being open, but that's not the conversation that was had. It didn't have, they didn't even want blue crabs. It was going to be a barbecue type deal. So, now, and I understand the position of the, I mean, where Mayor is going, I wholeheartedly agree. I think the Blue Crab Festival name is what it is. It's going to be the draw, but however, that's not what Polack Young Professionals was wanting to do.
And I think that you should have articulated, that I think that we were able to tell, you know, by the underlying comments you were making, that that's not the direction you wanted to go in. So, we do need that transparency upfront, and we would like to hear what you all, you know.
Commissioner McCaskill, I am open to the concept of the blue crab, but like I said earlier, this is going to take bodies and volunteers. We need some serious promises from people to help us find blue crabs. I mean, you're talking to an organization that has never sourced blue crabs before. I don't think anyone on our board or our, in, in our organization has done that. We know nothing about it. So, if someone is willing to hold our hands and say, I can promise you that we'll help you find blue crabs, I would-
So, can we, maybe, if you do it this way, just so we can keep the Blue Crab Festival name, could you make a request that whoever the vendors are, have some kind of crab item for, because I, I don't, again, we were like, what, how many ones out?
I can't remember.
But we're, we're only one, one day away from a meeting for them to make a decision.
Exactly, so if they come back and say no, what are we going to do?
I got, I want to say, I'm probably the oldest person here, and I know that you young people don't think the way we do, because my family tells me that all the time, I forgot about the generation. I think that we have messed around, and we had some people who came in and misled us on what they were doing with the crab festival. They got away from us because we, we thought that we had the right people in there all the time doing it. We do not need to lose Memorial Weekend in having an activity in Polack. It should be one that is one that people look at Polack, because that's what, what they're trying to promote. They've got businesses here, they're trying to bring people in. I don't care myself what y'all told, I think that we need to have some activity done. I think y'all may have different ways of going about who you want here and how you're going to get them here. I think that if you don't have enough time to put it around with how we're going to do it, I think we need to let y'all come in and, and, and give us some thoughts, because I'm sure the crab festival probably started the same way. Somebody had the idea, and somebody went from there. And I think that we need to, to go for it, because we don't have that many months. This is a year planning thing, and you do stuff like this, and they're trying to get it done in a few months. And I'd like to see us have something on Memorial Weekend. If, if we, if we have a crab, and you say a crab festival, it don't mean that you got, everybody got to have crabs. It means that you have enough there that people get some, and, and they'll be glad to get any kind of seafood if you walk down there and see it, so.
I think you're pretty much, with the shortness of time, you don't have time to sell the name brand Rhythm on the River. You go see these people that we're looking to make it happen with, you got to go as it. Blue Crab, we're resurrecting it, know it's not what it was in the past, make sure people know that, but we're resurrecting, that's what it's on there. Rhythm on the River, I love the name, love what it says, but you're not going to sell that name this quick. You don't have enough time to build that brand, build that name. You've got a short amount of time to make it happen, it needs to be Blue Crab, and we can sell that, and I'll help you sell it to people we went to before. I'll go see those. I will tell you, an attorney, Ron Schultz, invested in Blue Crab, took $10,000, and he was totally dislured when he got, just a couple of years ago. We could go back, we got a different group doing it, a lot of people make it happen. I'll help you sell that.
So, tomorrow is our meeting, and whether you were talking to Polack Young Professionals or a different county-owned organization, they still have to take it back to their board, so nothing was going to be decided tonight out of their way. Our meeting is tomorrow, I will take back everything that we've said, we've had multiple members here in the audience all night. So, I, I think that we have a good basis of information, and we need to take it back, and we need to discuss it with our members to find out what they are willing to do.
How many crabs, how many pounds of crabs do you think we'd need? You and the fact that we're not going to have a peak crab, probably, how many, how many pounds of crab do you think, of crab do you think you'd need? And I'll get somebody on, try to find out what availability is.
I would think five, six thousand pounds is pretty much your minimum Saturday. The other days aren't going to be as heavy, Saturday's going to be, going to be what you got to have. And there are people, you just got to find the right person, and it took us a couple of years. Once we got that person, we got the blue crab.
Well, for the first year, I mean, I'm thinking I'm going to try to figure out if there's, if they're available, and, you know, we'll worry about, could some kind of, I understand, not just, I'm not going to be bickering, but, we'll figure out that, but I, I, it was mentioned that there might be a shortage, or they might be hard to come by, I can figure out whether we can get crabs.
And I think Robbie Sholl in Crescent City could answer that question.
Well, I was going to say, we're sitting here with commercial fishermen all around us, I bet you we could find that.
And I think that's something that-
Hold on, one second.
I just, I just took one local crabbers, and they said that if they don't have them, there is a crab records bill that buys them up and down the east coast of the United States, and they can be had for that weekend.
There you go.
So, I think that's all the stuff that you can take back to the board.
I'd be happy to take it back with them, and this is very different than what we had originally discussed, so.
I would think the main thing-
So, we're going to wrap up in a second.
I mean, I just want to ask, because I, I just want to ask, so the next steps after they go back?
That's what I'm getting at. I got you. So, so what we're doing, wrapping up. First and foremost, you guys have the weekend. The first thing, one of the reasons I put you at the beginning of the agenda is so you could share with us what your ideas were. Your response was, we just want to hear what everybody else says at that point. So, for me, where we are, you've heard what everybody has to say. Whatever your idea is, because you guys have stepped out front and got the, the, you've already put in the, the weekend, you put in for the weekend, you stepped up to the, you stepped up to the plate. We're supportive of you in whatever you do, and we're going to push forward with what we've got. I think at the end of the day, Polack of folks are sitting in this room and listening because we all care. And so, while I think everybody has love for blue crab, or for the, for the concept of blue crab and what blue crab has been in this community, at the end of the day, we're supportive, you've got special events permanent requests in place, and we're supportive of you in, you know, in the direction this organization wants to go. And we're going to come out and volunteer. It may be a situation where you've got some other organizations that want to partner with you, decide that they want to be the ones to sell blue crab, and they're willing to come in and do that. And I think all of those things are in place. I, I believe that everybody, including the city and the county, and the chamber from the, from governmental sides, we've got to do what we, we've got to have some skin in the game as well, I think, in order to make this event take place, because there's a benefit to everybody. I believe that the downtown merchants have to be involved, Revitalize has to be involved, you know, the school district, the pilot club, the Lions Club, Rotary, all these other organizations have to be involved. And also, from our personal standpoint, we've got to be willing to get out and see if we can help you fundraise to get some of this stuff in place, because at the end of the day, it's all of us in the same, we're all together, and we have, and Ms. Brown continually says, we're better together. So, whatever the play is in the playbook, we're going to all run it together, and we're going to be supportive, and we're going to make it happen. And I think that's the consensus in this room, is that we're all going to be supportive to make this the best event that it can be. But I personally would at least want some consideration for what the brand, regardless of how the festival has gone, is easily recognizable across the state from an event standpoint. I think whether, if you change the name to whatever, in the marketing, it may be an opportunity if, in fact, there's some availability there to do some stuff. But, you know, we understand that this is a placeholder, but it's also a building point, it's a building block as we move forward, and-
Is there a name you want me to check on as far as making certain that we don't interfere with any, any rights that somebody might already have? Is there a name that you want me to check on?
Can we just limit it to Polacka Blue Crab or Jim City Blue Crab?
Polacka Blue Crab Festival, Jim City Blue Crab Festival.
All right. Or switch it up, Blue Crab Festival of Polacka, I mean, if all else fails, you just-
I think you'd want to make it more inclusive.
So, Blue Crab being the, the, the key element in the name, so, okay.
St. John's Blue Crab, Jim City Blue Crab. I like Jim City.
I think Jim City's a good one. Sounds like, sounds like great opportunities for surveys in the community.
But we don't want to take, take away their voice, I mean, because they're the ones that stepped up.
I don't think we are. I think our word does make a suggestion. At the end of the day, they've got their ultimate decision, because they got the, they've already, they've worked the place.
There's a collective of us, I'll take this back, and I'll give them the names that we've talked about, I would really appreciate you looking over.
What was your name again?
Polack Young Professionals.
No, but I'm talking about the name you want-
Oh, Rhythm on the River.
Which I like.
I like it too, but I, I also understand where you're coming from, the blue crab has a following. I mean, I can travel to other cities, and people have heard of it across the state. I get what it is, just providing something that is scarce at that point in time, that I know nothing about, is slightly daunting, but I think with the help of other people, it's something that we, I mean, it sounds like we can seal it off. But again, we don't want to do something that we're just pulling off, we want to do something that we do, and we do it well.
Some next steps for the group at this point?
We'll have a vote tomorrow evening, after hours.
You've got a meeting tomorrow, I think, and from there, the yea or nay as to where you guys are as far, and what you need from us, I think the next step is for you to tell us what you need from us.
Okay.
And, and then, you know, one thing, and then you've got to talk about it, and all the other things that are there. I think part of that process is getting information from the folks who've done this before, who are in the community. And, you know, many of us in this room who are committed to the effort, I think, before we leave here tonight, if you want to be involved in the process of volunteering in some capacity or your organization, let's get a list going, and so that we can kind of have that communication chain out there as we move forward. And we'll just designate Mr. Jones as the conduit for the city, so that the commissioners won't have, won't be on that list, won't worry about any sunshine violations from that standpoint. But let's, let's build from that and go forward. Yes, sir. Any, any other suggestions for next steps?
I'm more than willing to be a resource. Anytime, I'll be more than happy to go there, whatever it may be, make it happen.
And so, you can put me down, well, but we will, we'll create a list of people who are willing to be resources to get other volunteer relationships or sponsorships or whatever, and, and put down what it is that you want to do next to your name and your contact, so that we can kind of go from there.
Create a list of what need to be done, too, and then, you know, you know what I'm saying, the inventory list of what need to be done, and then assign people to it as you go along, right?
And then, from there, I mean, time is, time is taking, time is a vest is right now. When are your, when are applications due for EDC?
The applications are available right now, and they end, I believe, February 26th. We have the application.
And, and they can, and, and you can also, and Dana will, Ms. Jones will assist you with the application as well, and they have resources to help out as well. And so, making sure that, you know, from there, we move forward and have a plan, you know, we, there needs to be a plan in motion soon, so that we can all kind of know where we are. And we're willing to help, hire where we can at this point. Yes, sir.
The newspaper will get behind whatever is decided, because we are for the good of the community. If Polack Young Professionals Board should say, you know, that's a great idea, but we want to do what our theme is, and we're just going to back away at this point, then is not the city looking at another two-week expiration of time for the missions back together? And do you think it's done?
We can come back sooner.
If they decide, yeah, if they decide, emergency means-
Commissioner has a meeting next week. There's a meeting next week.
The, I, I think the, the one thing in, in this particular situation is, we want to make sure that we're good partners as well, and we don't create any impediments to this thing getting, being done. And so, for, for me, my, my belief is that the city should be a good steward and a good partner as it relates to this event, and I think that's the sentiment from the commission, not even looking at everybody, but I think everybody wants this to happen, and we're going to make every effort we can to make it happen from, from the government side. Government will not be a barrier to this coming, to fruition. And personally, I think we all have some commitment to making this event a reality, whether it's volunteering or whatever it may be, and we commend you guys for stepping up.
Thank you.
Certainly appreciate it.
Any closing, any closing comments?
Be better together.
Any, any name?
Everybody, remember the best leads here, weigh-ins daily Thursday through Sunday at 4:00 p.m. through 3:00 p.m. Sorry, we were missing, I didn't say it.
Commissioner, or Board?
Nothing, I'm just happy that we are here today, making steps to at least let us have something for this Memorial Day, and again, I'm, I'm very supportive of it, and anything I can do to help, I'm, I'm available.
Thank you.
Commissioner McCaskill?
Thank you, thank you so much for stepping up.
Thank you.
Having the help.
Ms. Jones?
Blue Crab started off really small, you know, and as it grew, more people got involved, but it was a labor of love mostly, and the people who were involved with it were involved because they loved Polacka, they didn't necessarily have a business downtown, but they had a vested interest in making Polacka grow and be better. And so, it started small. I was the first one, I remember it very well. If you wanted anything besides boiled blue crabs or fried seafood, you went to your restaurant, when you guys had the restaurant there, and you wanted to drink, there was, you know, there was, I think there was a keg at the river, so, yeah, it was, it started small.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Holmes?
No.
Ms. Brown?
I have the highwaymen who are artists, here's their card. They, um, are black artists that never had a place to go and they got, they did their work and exhibited along the highways. Now they travel all over Florida and the United States. And I gave you those, uh, two pictures that you can show your folks on the front. That quality of work is, is outstanding. They come to our legal city, one of them, and they'll probably be glad to bring somebody here for it.
Thank you.
Ms. Jones.
I echo the same sentiments as the other commissioners. Thank you for, um, stepping up to the band and to Mayor Hill for having this meeting or calling forth this meeting to show the community that we do have a vested interest in making sure that we put on something that's of quality. Um, because we were getting a lot of flak, um, from the community. But definitely thank you for having this meeting so that we can put it out there that we want to see something happen in that event.
Anybody else with a party shot, party words? Anything else? For, you're going to have last words tonight. For me, let us know what we can do to help. And we are supportive. Um, in whatever ways we can make this thing happen. Um, the city needs a marquee event to continue on Memorial Day weekend. And you've kind of heard the sentiments here. At the end of the day, nobody here, I don't think anybody in this room will walk away from this community based on the name of an event or based on a concept when at the end of the day, we all believe that this, that this community is better together. And your final words, the word.
I think we're just excited to do this and work with so many other organizations. Uh, downtown revitalization is paramount to our city. And I think that this is a great start and we do need some sort of flagship event. And I really hope that we're not a placeholder. I hope that we can continue to do this and do it well. So I'd like to throw that out there. Thank you again.
Thank you.